Good morning, and thank you for joining us today as the National Board of Public Health Examiners presents the second in our series of six webinars geared towards explaining the Certified in Public Health, the CPH credential, and help you prepare for the upcoming exam. Each session will be two to three hours long and include a 10-minute break halfway through the presentation. We are pleased to have Donna Peterson, the Dean of the University of South Florida College of Public Health, present on the cross-cutting areas of the CPH exam. The slides will be available on the website and emailed to you. Welcome, Donna Peterson.
Thanks, Kate, and good morning, everyone. Thanks for joining us. We're delighted that you're interested in the CPH, and we're happy to help you do the best that you can do on this exam. I will be reviewing what are known as the cross-cutting items, and what I'd like to do is begin with just a bit of an overview, let you know why we developed this particular set of items within the content guide, and then I'll go through each of the different topical areas within the cross-cutting competencies that then led to cross-cutting items, give you some possible examples of the types of things that you might see on the exam, and happily answer any questions that you have. As Kate said, these slides will be made available after the session. They will be emailed to you, and you can ask a question at any time, and certainly we'll take some at the end as well. So with that is just a brief introduction. Currently, the cross-cutting items make up 25 of the 200 items on the exam, so that's only 12 and 1/2 percent of the exam, but as you know, every item counts, so you want to make sure that you prepare for all of the topical areas in the exam. So the cross-cutting items are a distinct group. They are not typically taught within the traditional core courses, but are the kinds of skill sets and knowledge areas that are important for professional practice. And as you may know, when the National Board was created, there was a very deliberate effort to construct a board that reflected both academics and practitioners, so these particular skill sets are important to the practice community, and so for those of us in the academic world, it's also important that we give students opportunities to understand these cross-cutting areas and to develop some competence in them. People have said to me over the years, and I think it's true, that a lot of these cross-cutting items really reflect just common understandings, things that you would know just from being part of a community, things that you would know just from reading the newspaper, things you would pick up in conversations if you're a student, things you might pick up from guest speakers if you were out in the field, these are things that you will have encountered. So that's an important point because if you're a student, or if you haven't been a student in a while, and you're saying, "Well, I don't remember a class on this," you probably didn't have a class on these particular things, but they are items of knowledge and particular skills that you will have picked up through coursework and other learning experiences or just professional experience. And just a little bit of where this came from. So when what was then ASPH, we are now ASPPH, when they decided to develop competencies for the MPH degree, the easiest way to organize the work was around what was then the five core areas. So they formed work groups around those five core areas, and that is reflective of the content guide for this exam. But in that particular effort, these work groups got together, and they were focused on, okay, what were critical competencies in biostatistics or environmental health? And in each case, the groups came back and said, "Well, you know, we came up with other things that we think are important, but they don't really fit within our area." So things like our students and graduates need to be able to communicate, they need to be culturally competent, they need to be able to lead. So those things came up in every group, but no group felt like they owned that content area, and they didn't really think it fit under their area. Oops, I went too far. So when we all got together again and understood that we had all had the same experience, and we all had come up with other things that we thought were important for an MPH student or graduate, we formed a whole new set of groups. We actually developed nine of them, and those groups then spent a number of months coming up with a set of competencies that they thought were important for the professional practice of our field. We also, at that time, wrote a preamble to the competencies because we noticed when we looked at the entire competency set, because they were developed within the focal areas, or in this case, the cross-cutting areas, we somehow missed that one of the core competencies for an MPH graduate or student should be to be able to define public health, its principles. So we didn't want to create a whole new competency set at that point, so we wrote a preamble, which looks like this. So we define public health, and we talk about the things that are important to our practice. So you can see this, you know, we want public health professionals to be focused on optimal human growth and development across the life course, air, food, and water safety, workplace, school safety, respect for participation, timely detection of outbreaks, science-based responses, healthcare access, encouragement of healthy choices, and policies. And those things are reflected in the other core areas, but I think it's important to put this out here now because it leads to another development in our understanding of public health education in the exam, which I will get to in a moment. So the initial set of competencies, the model looked like this. If you haven't seen it, so you see the five core areas around the outside, and then what eventually became these cross-cutting competencies inside. And again, you'll see that what's inside the box really reflects the application of what a student would have learned in the five core areas to the professional practice of public health. So that model then drove the design of the exam because it was the common competency set that drove curricula in schools and programs of public health. So that's the origin of the content guide, and again, the five core areas are the predominant focal point for the exam. This group in the middle, as I said, 25 out of 200 items, 12 and 1/2 percent of the exam, and these slides will all be available after this session. So what I want to do is just go through them quickly and tell you how the groups defined them. So communication and informatics, this had originally been two groups, I think, and was combined. And the way the group defined this particular domain area was the ability to collect, manage, and organize the data, to produce information and meaning. It's exchanged by use of signs and symbols, the ability to gather, process, and present information to different audiences in person through information technologies or media channels, and to strategically design information and knowledge exchange programs to achieve objectives. So the broad area of communications, both oral, written, and increasingly through the use of technology. Second, diversity and culture, the ability to interact with both diverse individuals and communities to produce impacts and intended public health outcomes. So again, an appreciation of the diversity of the communities within which we work, and the ability to work with them and within them to produce improvements to public health. The leadership, cross-cutting area, the ability to create and communicate a shared vision for a changing future, champion solutions to organizational and community challenges, energize commitment to goals. I actually like this one a lot, and I love the first clause of this statement, the ability to create and communicate a shared vision for a changing future. That really is what this is about, but as I'll get to in a moment, you can imagine how challenging it is to write a multiple-choice question on that concept. The next is professionalism. Obviously, we're talking about the profession of public health, and we want students and graduates and those who earn the CPH exam to understand ethical choices and values and professional practices implicit in public health decisions, consider the effect of choices on community stewardship, equity, social justice, and accountability, and to commit to personal and institutional development. Program planning, this gets a little more concrete, the ability to plan for the design, development, implementation, and evaluation of strategies to improve health. And again, you know, remember, these didn't appear in any of the other core areas, but are clearly important for professionals working in the field. Public health biology, again, we didn't have that explicit in any of the core areas, but people felt that it was very important for public health graduates and those earning certification to understand the biological and molecular context of public health. So even though many of us are not trained in the clinical professions or the clinical sciences, it is still important to have a basic understanding of how biology works and how biology and increasingly genomic understandings help us design and evaluate and implement public health programs. And the last is this idea of the system of public health, the system approach to public health, systems thinking, system science. This is very much an evolving field, but we understand that a public health approach is a systems approach. We very rarely have the luxury of working in isolation. We very rarely have control over all of the things that contribute to health, and so we really want people to be able to understand the system properties that result from these interactions and how they affect these relationships. This one, as I said, this is evolving. This may be the least developed of these particular competency areas, but it was an important concept to get out there, so it got included in these competency domains. So early versions of the exam, as I said before, we designed these competencies around the common core curricula. These cross-cutting ideas came out of those discussions, appropriately so. And then that competency model then became the basis for the content guide for the exam. And so we said to the pioneers who stepped up and were willing to help us write items for this exam, and we continue to rely on the kindness of our colleagues to write items, so we said, "Well, we're using this competency guide. It is, in effect, our content guide, so we want you to write items that reflect those competencies." But the fact of the matter was, we also had to be mindful of the fact that if we were going to be testing the sort of common core knowledge of students and grads, that the questions had to reflect what had actually been taught. And so we also said to people, you know, "It's fair and appropriate. You may look at this competency guide and say, 'Yes, I appreciate that this is a sophisticated set of competencies within all of these areas that I would expect an MPH graduate to know and to be able to do,' but the fact of the matter is, you know, that's not always the way we teach." And even though there is a common core curricula across all the accredited schools and programs, we know that not every course is the same, and that's fine. The content may reflect the community within which the school or program is, it may reflect the interests of the students, and it certainly reflects the knowledge and the strength of the people teaching those courses. So the required core was the only common, you know, at least the notion of a core. And as I said, we didn't always agree on what was taught in those courses or what was appropriately taught in those courses. And early item-writing meetings were very interesting because we'd get into some pretty intense debates about what should or shouldn't be covered in these courses, and as a result, what was a fair question for the exam. So thinking about the cross-cutting competencies then, which, again, I said earlier, you probably are saying, "I never had a class on that," and you probably did not, and so asking people to write items in those areas was even more challenging because there was a lot of concern that, "Well, you know, I don't know where that would be covered. I don't know where students would have learned that." But again, as I said earlier, a lot of this is just common sense, common understandings that we think, you know, with some thought in, if you've been out in the field, that these shouldn't be that challenging concepts. But writing these items is really hard. To write a good item, that's a multiple-choice item, we've all learned going through this experience, is actually hard. It's not as easy as it sounds, even within the content areas that seem more concrete. In these cross-cutting areas, it's really, really challenging. As I said, writing a multiple-choice question about systems thinking, or what it means to be a professional, or what it means to lead, what it means to be culturally competent, these are really challenging. And when we've done these review sessions in person, I've asked the participants to actually take a moment and try and write an item on one of these domain areas, and I would encourage you to try to do it as well. One, because it's an interesting challenge, but I think also, I hope you are heartened by the experience and say, "Wow, this is really hard, and so these questions are probably going to be more straightforward than I may be fearing that they are." So even though these concepts seem rather elusive and sort of highbrow, we are writing a multiple-choice exam, and so these questions are going to have to be as clear as they possibly can be. But if you have a moment later on, and you want to just try to write a multiple-choice question, just to reinforce this point that I'm making. And the way you write a multiple-choice question is, you first write the STEM, and ideally, that STEM is a complete thought, so that if someone reading the STEM, if they covered up the responses, they could still come up with the potential correct answer to that STEM. So you have to write a complete thought as a STEM, and then you have to come up with four response options. And you want the examee to have to think about those response options, so they've read the STEM, an answer has come to mind, they now look at the responses, and they either see that answer immediately, or they see a couple of answers that look like they might reflect that concept that came into their mind, or they might not have had a thought, and so now they're trying to look at these four response options and see which one might be right. We like to write these items so that there is one best answer, which means you may look at these responses and say, "Hmm, well, I don't know. I think it might be A or B, but it could also be C." So we really want you to think about which is the best answer to the questions. And I will tell you, too, that the response options have to be real. So if someone says, "What agency within the, you know, Department of Health, DHHS, is responsible for drug testing or something?" You can't make up, you know, so you would have the FDA as one option, that's the right answer, but then you have to come up with three other agencies that actually exist and are real. So we're not trying to trick you on this test. We're not putting things out there that you've never heard, well, there may be things you've never heard of, but they are real entities, they are real chemicals, they are real policies, so that we are trying to test your knowledge and your understanding, your appreciation, and to see if you can actually come up with the one best answer. So again, as I've said, we used the MPH competency model developed by the Association of Schools of Public Health to develop the content guide, which allowed us to then categorize items. So we could put items then in any of the five core areas where they appropriately belonged, or in this cross-cutting category within those domain areas. So that's why we've organized these review sessions around those same topical areas, and why the exam is intended to mirror in some fashion what gets taught within the schools. So we were going to take a break here, but it's very early, and I don't think I'm going to take two hours, so unless someone needs a break, I think I'm going to keep going. Kate or Brian, do you want to give me a signal about if that's okay?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'll just keep going. We can get the note. All right, so we actually added, as I mentioned, we added a preamble to the competency set. And in putting the exam together, we realized that we were missing a content guide category that reflected that basic language that was in that preamble, the sort of general understanding of public health, the values, the principles. So we, and people would write items on these topics because they're very, very important, and it wasn't always clear where they belonged in the content guide. So we created a new content category, and it is intended to cover general principles of our field, and it includes things such as what's on the screen here. So how do we define, how do we define health, how do we define public health, how do we define other aspects of our field, some notion of sort of historical, you know, important historical events, and because there are things that as a public health professional you should just know and be familiar with, and again, not detailed things that you might never have heard of, not obscure, arcane things, but big events like Jon Snow taking the handle off the water pump in London to stop the cholera epidemic, you know, those kinds of events that were important in our development. So those are fair game in this particular category. What are the core functions of public health, the three core functions as described by the IOM in 1988, which then were further expanded into the 10 essential services, which not only helped guide public health planning, but have now formed the basis of the accreditation of public health programs and departments, so important to understand that, the values of public health, our notion of the responsibility for public health within the United States, for sure. Where do the different agencies sit, who has ultimate responsibility, how do the feds relate to the states, how do the states relate to the locals, and then that gets into our system, and being able to effectively describe and understand the elements of the public health system in the United States. And I should say at this juncture, and you'll see embedded in the content guide references to global health because we recognize that public health is a global phenomenon, and we recognize that there are people not in the United States who wish to take this exam. We have embedded some global health-related questions into the exam for that purpose, but by and large, this is an exam, and so even though we have tried to identify those areas that should be common knowledge for all of us, a lot of the questions are U.S.-specific, and so if you're studying for this exam and you're not in the United States, that's something that you will want to pay attention to. Again, this is foundational knowledge. This exam is more equivalent to the step one of the USMLE, so we're not expecting a lot of sophisticated knowledge, a lot of detailed knowledge, but we do expect a general understanding of how the public health system in the United States works, and that includes the healthcare system as well. So again, some possible topics under that area, again, the Public Health Accreditation Board, what is that, who might seek accreditation under that, is it mandatory or not? Obviously, it's not. We would expect you to understand those core functions, be able to define them, define basic public health, the relationship of those 10 essential services to the core functions, the values that we hold dear, and then the authority for public health in the United States derives from the Tenth Amendment to the Constitution, which reserves certain powers to the states, public health being among them, which is why in public health, responsibility, in the United States, responsibility for public health rests at the level of the state. There are often questions about that on this exam because it's an important concept. The notion of police power derives from that. It's why we have 59 different variations on the scene of state health departments, the states and territories, who bear the responsibility but aren't told what to do or how to do it. So if you've seen one state health department, you've seen one state health department, how they relate to their local communities also will vary state by state, and how the feds relate to the states varies because the states aren't all the same. So those are general topics that are important. The model that we use to understand public health, the ecologic model that embeds individuals within families, within communities, within organizations, within the society at large, may be fair game for questions under this area, the levels of prevention. You know, there may be questions on there about is screening primary prevention or some other level of prevention, what might be an example of tertiary prevention. The whole life course perspective of public health, the notion that things that happen to us before we are even born affect our birth and our early childhood, our early childhood affects our adolescence, our adolescence affects our adulthood. This is a relatively new idea in the scientific community, but it's sort of an old idea for those of us who've been in this field and just understand that intuitively, that there is growing evidence that, in fact, this is very, very true, and it argues for a primary, if not a primordial, prevention approach. In this category, there might be questions on the health objectives for the nation. We're up to Healthy People 2020 now, though gearing up to write the next set of objectives, so having an understanding of what those are, how they're used, would be very important. And then, as I said, we also would expect people to understand their now sustainable development goals, they were the Millennium Development Goals for the world, so the World Health Organization developed these goals, and now they've come up with a new set. But if we're going to help nations successfully develop and gain economic strength, they have to be healthy. And so when you look at these now sustainable development goals, or even the earlier iteration, there's a lot of public health goals and objectives within those, which just makes sense. And so, again, not a lot of detail, not a lot of specificity, but we would expect someone with a Master of Public Health degree to understand how the sort of global community sets its policy agenda, just like we do in the United States through Healthy People. Again, as I said, how do the agencies, HHS and other agencies at the national level relate to the states, states relating to the local, that's all possible within this particular category. So again, these are concepts that you would want to familiarize yourself with and be comfortable and confident in your knowledge. So I mentioned, you know, some historical events. I mentioned Jon Snow, there was the Jacobson versus Massachusetts, very famous court case which clarified that states do have the ability to mandate things like the smallpox vaccine, which was the case in that particular court case, very, very important, set the precedent that the needs of the larger community could, depending on the circumstances, override those of any one person in that community. The mercury poisoning in the Minamata Bay in Japan, that's an example of an early environmental disaster, and there may be others you could think of. The 1964 report, Report of the Surgeon General, of course, is the famous report linking tobacco use to poor health outcomes, very important report. The Leland Report, you may not have heard of, but it was a Canadian report that preceded the original Healthy People report in the United States. It was the first report by a country to say, "We believe that health promotion is as important as disease prevention," and it really laid out a health promotion in the United States with the Healthy People, the first Healthy People report. The Welsh Rose Report, you may or may not have heard of, that is now 100 years old, laid out the blueprint for schools of public health, so an important sentinel event, vaccines, we've already talked about the Jacobson case. It would probably be helpful to know that Edward Jenner developed the first vaccine for smallpox, you know, but again, general knowledge about vaccines and why they're important to public health. the Alma Aza Conference on Primary Care, again, in more of a historical context. So it'd be helpful to familiarize yourself with those things. So that's the general principles domain here that we added. So now we're back to the cross-cutting. So communications and informatics, these are the kinds of things that appear in the content guide. So you may see items under any of these. So the public health information infrastructure, how do we effectively communicate public health messages? How do we use persuasive communications? How do we do risk communication? You can go back to the Ebola outbreak last year, and the CDC, you know, you may think they did a wonderful job, you may think they did a terrible job, but how we communicate risk and how we educate and inform the public without alarming the public. Again, there will not be specific questions here, but questions that allow the testers to say, "Yes, you understand these concepts." How do we use informatics to promote public health? And again, this is, this is growing, how we use all of the media tools that are out there, texting and Facebook, and how we, how we use, how we monitor the use of those kind of media to track what might be happening, very important in disaster response. So those are, again, just general concepts. How do we use informatics and communications to advocate? So it's not only how we educate and inform the public, but how we advocate for policy and program change. What are the legal and ethical issues related to communications? You can imagine there are quite a few, you know, and again, back to risk communication. There's always the challenge of, you know, do you say, do you tell everything you know? Do you only tell enough so that people will make choices to act in ways that you hope they do? These are always challenges for us. But again, just having the basic understanding, basic theories and strategies and communication and informatics at a foundational level. So some possible topics within those broad domains. You know, I talked about the information infrastructure, but part of that is how we collect and manage information that we then might use in communication strategy. So all of the data we collect within public health or around public health to help us understand what's happening, the birth and death registration systems, all of the surveillance systems that we have. And again, you should be familiar with the big ones, the Behavioral Risk Factor Surveillance Survey, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, the National Health Interview Survey. I mean, those are, those are the big ones that, you know, help inform our understanding of public health and factors that impact public health. And then there are surveys that are done on a, I'm sorry, those were surveys, I'm tired. Those were surveys, Behavioral Risk Factor Survey, Youth Risk Factor. Surveillance is how we monitor disease incidents. So the disease reporting system in the United States, there are certain diseases that must be reported, that's active surveillance, and we also survey for environmental things as well. Then there are the surveys, I'm sorry about that. And then there's the data that we gather just to manage our program. So the WIC program, for example, is a great example. It's a very big program. There's a lot of pregnant women and mothers and young children. There's a lot of information that we gather in terms of eligibility and services received, and so that's useful for managing the program, but it can also yield important information for us when we're thinking about planning new programs or developing new policies. So again, it would be important to understand that concept. And then in the clinical realm, there are a number of quality measures, quality systems. There are enrollment, there's enrollment information in public programs, there's claims information from payers, and increasingly through electronic health records, there's the ability to amass lots of information on patient, patient communities that ideally, and I think we're working toward this, could be linked to other population systems and really help us have some very powerful tools. Again, these questions will largely be around the general concepts, nothing terribly specific. Also under this topic, questions around the media, the importance of the media in helping us do public health communications, the importance of the media in sometimes challenging us when we're trying to manage something. The media always wants, you know, they want to know what's going on, and sometimes you're not sure you're ready to release that kind of information, you might not know it yet. So the media plays very, very important roles. They can also, they can be allies, they can also sometimes pose challenges to us. How a message should be designed, again, simple kinds of questions that I don't think you'll have trouble with, risk communication, and then again, what might be ethical issues in communication, things like how much do you say, when, and where? What are the, what are the risks of perhaps alarming a public when you're really trying to inform them? HIPAA, which is a legal effort to try to protect the health information of individual patients. States will have their own privacy laws, and some states, some data are confidential, and other states they're not. Again, we're not going to ask you whether Oklahoma does or does not, but basic understanding that those laws will vary, those approaches will vary. This gets back to the earlier topic because public health is a responsibility of states, and states will set their own agendas and develop their own policies and approaches. Under diversity and culture, this is the second of the cross-cutting areas. You'll see in the content guide, these kinds of topical areas, the history of how we define race and ethnic groups and culture, how we, how we understand perceptions of what those constructs mean, how we have collected data on race and ethnicity over the years, and how that has changed, what does cultural competency actually mean, what is a health disparity, what does health equity, what might it look like? Within this domain, are there cultural challenges to various communities having access to services? They may have access but not find them appropriate for them. How do we appropriately engage various communities? How do we engage diverse communities with diverse views? CBPR, of course, is Community-Based Participatory Research, a very important way of, a new way in some ways, of conducting research that very actively engages communities right from the very beginning. Communities help set the research agenda, they may help formulate the research questions, they are actively engaged in all phases of the design of the research, the conduct of the research, the analysis of the results, the analysis of the impact of those results, and in planning beyond that. So again, those basic concepts are important to know. And then just, you know, how cultural beliefs and worldviews affect health behavior? How cultural beliefs and worldviews affect whether or not you seek healthcare and from whom you seek healthcare? How cultural values, you know, may collide with prevailing healthcare beliefs? Those are important to understand, you know, if we're trying to improve health in a community, and there's distrust of the healthcare establishment in that community, and we're encouraging people to get, you know, colon cancer screening or something, and they're not going to go to the established healthcare institutions, we need to understand that, and we need to either find an alternative to that or work through some of those issues. It's not enough to just say to a community, "Hey, you need to be screened for X, Y, and Z, and here's where you can go." The whole idea of understanding diversity in culture is understanding that these things matter and that they're important in how we design programs and how we encourage people to access them. And then embedded in this category, we also put the concept of environmental equity, environmental justice. As we know, it is not uncommon for things that, waste dumps, hazardous waste sites, garbage collection facilities, you know, other things that are, people don't want them in their neighborhood, and so if you have more power and influence in your neighborhood, you won't have those things. Treatment centers for people with substance abuse or prison jail diversion program, I mean, all those things tend to concentrate in the lower-income communities, and that's an issue. Flint, Michigan, today makes very clear that these are important issues. So that concept, again, is embedded within this domain. Not a lot of detail, just an appreciation of the concept and why it's important. So again, some of the possible topics, I've already alluded to some of these. In all the data we collect, how do we define race and ethnic groups? How do people self-identify? What does that mean? Why do we collect these data at all? There are some countries, France, I think is one of them, that does not collect this kind of information in their systems. We continue to do so, and we struggle, but so again, it's important to understand that. The construct of race, is it a cultural phenomenon? Is it a biological phenomenon? There's debate about this, but understanding that race is a construct is an important thing to know here. Again, what does cultural competence mean? There are different terms, and you know, you'll see some of that reflected here. What is it, who is a stakeholder? What does that term mean? And when is it appropriate to engage communities? And how might we do that? Again, that relates very closely to community-based participatory research as a means of conducting research that embeds the research scientist and team and hypotheses and questions in the community, which can be very powerful, particularly if we're seeking to understand something better, develop strategies, develop solutions. We often gain much from engaging our community early on. Social and cultural determinants of health, as I already mentioned, so beyond the biological determinants of health and the environmental determinants of health, and how healthcare impacts health, it's also important to understand that there are social and cultural, political and economic determinants of health, what might that look like? And then again, understanding the notion of health disparity, and increasingly, we don't use that term as much, we prefer the more positive term, we are working towards The leadership domain, as I said, one of my favorites, but also particularly challenging to write multiple choice questions around. So you'll see in the content guide that we would, we would expect people earning the certification to understand basic attributes of a leader, understand the leadership role within a, within a public health organization, leadership theories and principles. I'm going to jump down a few bullet points. What's the difference between leadership and the management function of any organization? It's important to understand conceptually why those are different. Managers, you know, this old saying is managers do things right, leaders do the right things. You know, it's a level of, you know, the leader has a broader vision ostensibly, is really seeking to manage change processes. The managers make sure that whatever the leader and the group collectively decides to do gets done in the most effective and efficient way possible. Under the leadership domain, this notion of having, having the vision, how does that translate to a mission for an organization or a program? The values that undergird those kinds of planning activities, the difference between goals and objectives. I should say, I should have said this earlier, I'll say it here, there's some, some of these topics show up in multiple areas, so you might be looking at this one and saying, "Well, isn't that under program planning?" And I'll get to that in a moment. But there are some redundancies built into the content guide, and that's, that's just a function of how it's very difficult to compartmentalize what we do in our field. But we've tried to put things where we think they best belong, so that when we write items, we put them in a place where we can find them, we can extract them. So we put these here, because it is partly a leadership function to drive a program planning process. So the program planning process itself, it might be more a function of the management, where the leadership function helps you really see where you're trying to go and the change you're trying to achieve, and how you would manage that change. That is more of a leadership function. Communicating, listening, and responding are clearly leadership attributes, but they're critically important ones, the sort of, you know, without which not, it's very difficult to be a good leader if you don't listen well and if you don't communicate well. Being able to resolve conflicts and solve problems, again, a critical attribute. I've already touched about leadership versus management. Team building is an important leadership function, getting people engaged, working together toward a common goal within an organization, and then of course, outside the organization, how we build coalitions with other organizations, with other institutions, with other groups, how we engage stakeholders across the community, depending on what it is we're trying to do. Very, very important, and good leaders, gets back to the communication, listening and responding skills, and the conflict management skills. Engaging communities and engaging stakeholders and building coalitions often invites conflict because not everyone will agree, and so the job of a leader is to really manage that whole process. Leading with, leading through the basis of what we, what we value in this organization, in this field, the social justice and human rights principles, leaderships, leaders use those, those are the lenses through which leaders view their responsibilities in our field. That's not the case in others, but it's very much true of ours. And then the advocacy role of a leader is also embedded in this particular domain. So what are some possible topics that might show up in question? So we talked about the theories of leadership. One foundational theory is the management theory, Theory X versus Theory Y, just a basic understanding of the principle of either, you know, a very more sort of authoritarian, formal, you know, the manager directs everyone below. Theory Y is a more shared model. Leadership versus management, I've already discussed the difference there. In this topic, we also put the management of the human resource, which is critical in everything we do, again, solving problems, resolving conflicts, understanding that there are human resource principles, and there are worker laws out there, and just being mindful of those things. We already talked about the importance of building coalitions and engaging stakeholders, and then, you know, basic planning ideas here. And again, from a leadership lens, the idea of having the vision, where are we now? Where do we want to be? Being able to effectively communicate that, being able to engage people in the vision, that's a leadership role. We, so again, these are basic concepts, and I know I've said this five times, but I'll say it again, just, these are very difficult to write multiple choice questions about. So if you're worried about, you know, "How in the world am I going to know all this?" Again, a lot of it is common knowledge, common sense. If you've been a member of a community, if you've worked at all, a lot of these things will become intuitive to you. Ethics and professionalism, again, very important. We thought it was very important to include in the competency set, and because the competency set drives the content outline, this shows up here as well. So what does it mean to be a professional? What does it mean to have a code of ethics? What does it mean to bear response, to bear the responsibility for managing the public's trust? So we not only manage the resources that emanate from the public through taxation, we're also managing programs and policies and processes that directly affect that public. And so the level of trust and the level of responsibility that we bear for that trust is an important concept, and why it's important to be an ethical practitioner, and to understand what it means to be a professional in the field, and to maintain the integrity of that profession in everything we do. So we embed in this domain the, some of the ethics around research. So understanding what institutional review boards do to monitor research is an important concept here. How do we protect those people that are invited to engage in research? What are the Belmont principles, the basic Belmont principles about human, human subjects in research? And this is an area where I think we might expect perhaps deeper knowledge than in some of the areas, like we would expect some knowledge about using prisoners for research, for example, or the special care that you have to take when doing research with children. We would expect you to understand that people's participation in We would expect you to understand that people's participation in any research subject is their choice to make, that they have to be fully informed, they have to affirmatively consent to participate in that research, except for some extenuating circumstances, that even if you're using existing information, you still have to go to the institutional review board and explain what you're doing and how you're using existing information, and they will decide if you are therefore exempt from gaining informed consent from the subjects or not. It's a serious matter, and it's very important to us in public health, because it gets back to ensuring the public's trust. And if the public doesn't trust what you're doing, whether it's research or just offering services, it's going to be difficult for you to be successful, and in fact, it's often in the research area that we falter, it's where we lose trust. So understanding, you know, the sources of this whole notion, the Tuskegee trial, the Nuremberg trials, again, some sort of overarching concepts, but the importance of protecting persons is critical, and it was within this domain. Evidence-based planning evaluation, again, part of being a professional in this field is using the evidence base, so that's an important notion here. And then being, as I said, being responsible for expenditures, for dollars used, for the resources that are entrusted to us, is important here. Here we bring up, and again, it comes up in other domains, but we're often balancing the needs or desires or wishes of the individual against the needs of the larger community. The vaccine, you know, it's sort of no, it's sort of ironic in a way that, you know, one of the, one of the cases that sort of established public health authority was around the small tox vaccine and someone not wanting to take it. We still have these debates today. I was just listening to the radio this morning about wind energy in Middle America and communities not wanting winds turbines, or whatever they're called, in their rural communities, yet the benefits of clean energy, cleaner energy, and maybe less expensive power would probably be a good thing, but to what extent do you infringe on the rights of a few people to gain something for a larger group? And these are important considerations, and we have to be thinking about them all the time. Again, a general principle here that we would expect you to understand. And then the impact of the legal environment, so when Congress or the legislature or your county commission, you know, passes laws or ordinances, how does that affect us when the administrative laws are written pursuant to the statutory laws? Again, how does that affect our ability to practice, our ability to conduct research? So again, not lots of specifics, but understanding that one day, something may be perfectly legal, but maybe not morally right, and then it changes, and where are we on that? And how do we respond? Obviously, we respond to all regs and laws, but understanding that they may have either a facilitating impact or a hindering impact on what we do, understanding that concept. So again, on basic understanding of ethical principles, beneficence, non-maleficent, I can never say that word, non-maleficence, justice, autonomy, utility, respect for individuals, respect for communities, these are basic, basic ethical principles, and how we weigh them helps us make decisions. So the classic example is, should motorcyclists be required to wear helmets? That violates the autonomy principle, but it may be, it may support the beneficence, beneficence principles, you know, we're trying to prevent harm, but in so doing, are we taking away, are we taking away rights? And so understanding how those ethical principles are used to analyze public health decisions is important, and just in general, being familiar with these terms and what they mean. You might want to, you might want to bone up on that a little bit. I already mentioned the Belmont Report and the Tuskegee, infamous Tuskegee study, which actually sort of propelled the attention given to using human subjects in research. Probably wasn't a bad thing. I want to go back for a minute. I don't have it on here, but there is a public health code of ethics. It's been published by the American Public Health Association. It's very detailed, and again, we don't expect you to know every one of the codes of ethics, the ethical statements, but you should understand that there is a code of ethics, and be familiar with it and its origins. Under program planning and evaluation, again, I mentioned this earlier, and again, you can have these slides after the, you can have them after the session, they'll be emailed to you after the session, this will all be in here. But this is where, this does get much more concrete than some of these other domains, which are more, more at the conceptual level. This one is far more practical and concrete, and so you'll see a lot of things embedded under this particular domain, the whole planning and evaluation process, beginning with an assessment of need involving stakeholders. If you're going to implement a particular evidence-based program, what does it mean to be faithful to the original design? Which is, that's challenging in practice. It's difficult to exactly replicate a program in your community that was developed and implemented in one that's not like yours, but understanding that from a, from an implementation and evaluation point of view, that that concept is an important one to understand. And if you are not faithful to the original program design, how does that affect how you interpret your results? So it's just part of the planning process. So we know we always involve stakeholders, we know we use, we use the data that's available to us to identify and quantify and categorize needs, and come up with the factors that are either hindering or contributing to the desired outcome. From there, we might identify, and again, going back to the evidence base, which is always where we should go first, as part of our ethical principles, part of what it means to be a leader, see how these things all interrelate, to identify potential strategies, and then again, we may have to adapt them to our, to our particular circumstances, but again, that's part of planning. You'll see the vision, mission, goals, values, and objectives are here again, they were in the leadership domain, but here they get more tangible, more concrete. What does it mean to write an objective? What should an objective look like? You may see an item on here that asks you to, to perhaps pick the most appropriate objective or the one written according to standards. So you've probably heard the expression smart objective, so something that you can quantify, and that is time-limited, and is rational and specific. So you might, you might see a question on that. And how the values, again, undergird a planning process, how goals are the broad statements that help communicate the vision, how the objectives are the more concrete, again, specific, something you can quantify, because that then drives how you pay attention to how the program's implemented, the monitoring of program implementation, and then ultimately the evaluation at the end. Program and policy development is in here. Developing the resource needs for a program is in here. So what are the human, the fiscal resources, the material resources that you need, and how do you, how do you put that budget request together? How do you organize that? Different evaluation methods and designs. Again, this is a whole field of study unto itself, we're not expecting a great deal of sophisticated knowledge about this, but a basic understanding that evaluation is important, that we need to be evaluating what we do to make sure it's achieving its desired outcome. We need to monitor program implementation and evaluate continuously to make sure there aren't unintended effects of what we're trying to do, or that things haven't changed in the community that would either render this intervention no longer viable, or perhaps posing some kind of risk that we hadn't identified early on. So you'll see some questions on basic evaluation methods, how we communicate evaluation results. Again, this gets back to diversity and culture, it gets back to leadership, you know, that it's stakeholder engagement, all of that is embedded in this, in this area. And again, when we want to measure the effectiveness of a program, it's not only did we achieve some sort of outcome, but we often also measure the cost of that. So at what cost did I achieve that outcome? So that's also one way we measure effectiveness. So again, possible topics under this, the notion of maintaining the faithfulness, fidelity to program design, that concept is important, putting the budget together. Different planning models, pre-seed-proceed being perhaps the best-known and perhaps the most utilized. We're not going to ask, you know, very detailed questions about what's in phase five of the pre-seed-proceed model, but we would expect you to understand what the pre-seed-proceed model is, what it's about, why it was created, the fact that it is an entire planning process from sort of stakeholder engagement at the very beginning to outcome evaluation at the very end in a typical planning model. MAP is the NACO planning model that's used by a lot of health departments to develop their plans, also part of the accreditation process, I believe. And then again, smart objectives, what does that mean? How we measure effectiveness, I've alluded to that. And then the evaluation models, you know, again, not a lot of sophistication, but a basic understanding of the difference between a process evaluation and an outcome evaluation. You'll often see these other terms, so on the front end and on the back end, how do we, the process evaluation, you know, are we, were we faithful to the design? Where did we deviate? How has, how has the implementation taken place? Collecting the data on participants and services rendered, or however this is, however this is done? And then, so that's very important, it's a very important part of the evaluation of the program. But then of course, what everyone wants to know is, what outcome did you achieve? And you'll see different models, and some talk about impact evaluation and outcome evaluation. But again, the basic concept here is that you need to both evaluate what happened as a result of your intervention, whether you call that impact, intermediate, ultimate, outcome, what happened as a result of your intervention or your program, but also, how did you actually implement the intervention or the program? So the basic concept here is, you know, do you understand that both of those things are important? They're both part of the overall evaluation design, and that the data that you gather through the evaluation feeds right back, that's why planning cycles are often depicted as a circle or cycle, because that then feeds back into your ongoing assessment of need in this particular community. If you had received funding for a particular program or intervention, whether it's from the legislature or from a foundation, they're going to want to know what the evaluation results were. And so it's very, very important that you think about this at the very beginning of the planning. You don't wait till the whole thing is done and then say, oh, we need to evaluate it, because you want to make sure you're collecting the data that you need to effectively understand, how did I implement what I was doing here, and what impact did it have? So again, those basic concepts are important for you to understand, and you may well see questions like that of that nature on this exam. All right, I mentioned earlier on biology, basic public health biology. Again, we're not expecting people to suddenly become microbiologists, ecologists, or clinicians, but it is important that we have a basic understanding of things like host susceptibility, the immunologic response, basic genetic factors in disease, the basis for public health, the biological and molecular basis for public health. Again, not a lot, again, we don't expect a lot of detail here. We understand that our audience is very, very diverse in its background, in its interests, and its trainings, but even things as simple as understanding the difference between a virus and a bacteria, different sources of infection, how disease is transmitted, communicable diseases, non-communicable diseases, do they have genetic components, do they not? How is disease spread? How might disease spread be controlled? Basic concepts to make sure that our CPH folks have a basic, basic grounding in these general areas. Some of this overlaps with what's in the environmental health area. Again, as I said, there's some redundancy, but we did call this out because we did think it was important enough to warrant its own section in the content guide. So again, some possible topics under this area, what are the vectors for disease transmission, the typical vectors or agents? Foodborne illness, again, that shows up in environmental section, but it might also show up here. Characteristics of agents, so, you know, how likely are you to be infected if you're exposed? How sickly you become if you actually do contract the disease? And how severe is the disease? Those basic concepts. And again, the basic understanding of host susceptibility, the basic understanding of how vaccines work, how they function, what it means to be exposed and to develop an immune response. So just again, basic understanding of those notions, basic understanding of how clinical treatments work, that gets into issues of medication adherence and patient compliance, and some of these things also show up in the social behavioral sciences domain, because how we utilize our knowledge of human behavior and how to promote the kind of healthy behaviors that we like extends to this realm as well. So are people seeking healthcare when they should? That gets back to the diversity and culture domain. Are they responding? What if they're not responding? What does it mean to come up with effective doses? How does the FDA do its work? I mean, again, basic, basic concepts here that are very important to the practice of public health. And the last one is systems thinking. As I said, this one is still evolving, but it's an important concept, the notion that public health is itself a system, it exists within a larger system. The healthcare system, depending on your point of view, may or may not be part of the public health system, but it's certainly part of the larger societal system within which we work and relate. And so just basic knowledge of the characteristics of a system, you know, a system is a set of component parts that interrelate and communicate in some way. Basic systems theory, how do we, how do we actually assess changes in the system? How do we, how do we know things have changed or not changed? This is where we put some of the globalization questions, so things about global trade, a global food supply, global air pollution, global water resources, climate change. Again, some of this shows up under environmental health, but there's also the potential for a question to show up here. The fact that health status determinants are multifactorial, they are multi-dimensional, that gets back to the ecological model that we use in public health, and then how public health relates to other public systems, as well as private sector systems, general community systems, gets back to some of the cultural issues, and as I said, this is another one of those areas where it's very, very challenging to write multiple choice questions. So what might you see in a multiple choice question? Basic systems theory talks about things like feedback loops and stocks and flows. These are, you might say, I've never heard those terms before in my life, but you, in a systems theory context, you say, okay, I get it, you know, stocks and flows, what are the, what are the sort of things, stocks? What are the, I mean, back to how we define this system, this set of component parts that interrelates and communicates in some way. Again, characteristics of systems, a high-functioning system is a set of those parts working toward a common goal. We may argue that in our field, that we don't have a functioning system in some areas. We might have systems within systems that function well, the larger system may be more difficult to discern. But again, these are hard questions to write, and it's just basic concepts of the notion that public health does not work in isolation, public health itself is a system, this goes back to the very first domain, how does the, how does the public health system from the federal government relate to the state, relate to the local? How do, how do populations, how do they reflect a systems orientation? Kind of, if you think about notions of community, there's geographic communities, there are political, geopolitical communities, that there are also, you know, I'm in a community of people who believe what I believe or do what I do, I live in a particular part of a larger community, so the systems nature of that. Again, the notion of multiple determinants of health, and again, here is where, as I said before, you'll see some of the, sort of the notions of globalization. I mentioned trade, I mentioned- I mentioned trade, I mentioned food, I mentioned air and water, there's also migration. So the movement of people from place to place for a variety of reasons, to escape war, to seek better opportunities, for educational purposes, for work. As people move around, that affects the health of that community, it affects how you approach public health opportunities in that community. So again, basic understanding of these concepts will enable you to answer these questions with ease. So, I did this very quickly. So again, the cross-cutting area, it's a lot of content. You know, we just went through a lot of possible topics, all of the domains, all of the possible topics within them, but this only, all collectively, all totaled, there will only be 25 questions in this area on the exam. Only 25 questions out of the 200. And if, if this hasn't been communicated to you before, the 20, the 200 questions of the exam are in no particular order. So it's not like you say, oh, here's the cross-cutting part of the exam. So it's, it's a random order of questions, so you might answer an environmental question, and then you might get a policy question, then you might get a biology question. They won't be identified that way. It won't say, this is an epidemiology question, or this is an environmental health question. And you don't need to worry about that. We worry about that on the backend, it's how we construct the test, and it's how we, we score it on, on the backend. But just know that embedded in those 200 questions, there will be 25 that are drawn from all of these areas. These areas are difficult to write questions on. These are difficult areas to write a multiple choice question. So again, I, I tell you that not to frighten you, I tell you that hopefully to provide you some comfort, that knowing how hard they are to write, knowing that every item goes through a very thorough review process. There is no intention to ask a trick question, there is no intention to ask something beyond what a group of scholars and professionals believes you should know, either from your basic foundational coursework in your, in your current program or a previous program, but also things that you are likely to know just because you live in the world. You pay attention to what's going on around you. As a student, you converse with other students in other areas, you listen to guest lecturers. If you're out in the field, you are interacting with colleagues all the time. So these areas, they're important from a competency point of view, which is why they're included in the competency set. These are important areas for public health professionals to, to be competent in. The exam is not a thorough test of all competency in all areas, it is a foundational test. So we expect foundational competence in these areas. The content guide gives you basically this information in, in a little more detail. And I hope that I have given you some sense of what these, what these domains were intended to cover, what some of the possible questions might look like within those domains, that they're hard to write, which means they're pretty straightforward, because again, we're not, not here to trick you or to ask you something that it would be difficult for you to know. So I hope I've done that, that was my intent today, and I think, you know, again, you can utilize whatever resources you have to prepare for the, for the test in general. Your old textbooks and your old notes are, are good, your general knowledge of public health. If you have an opportunity to join with others to study, that often is helpful, because we all don't have the same knowledge base, and some of us have different experiences than others, and you can quiz each other, challenge each other, depending on where you are, where you're studying for the exam. Here in my College of Public Health, we tape flashcards all over the building, they're Velcro to the wall, the question's on the front, you can flip it over and get the answer on the back. So however you study, however you like to learn, and I hope I've given you some material to use in your studying and your preparation. So that's all I had on this topic. I am happy to answer any questions or clarify anything the best that I can, but that's it. And I'm delighted that you're interested in the exam, and I wish you all the best, and I'm sure you'll do fine. But again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Donna. This presentation will be up on the website, as well as emailed to you with a link and a, as a PDF. And thank you all very much for coming, and thank you very much, Dean Peterson.
Thank you, Kate.
Have a great day. Bye.
Bye-bye.